City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1446. Today is December 16th. It is 7:01. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. We're going to start with item number one, which is the roll call. The clerk, please call the roll.
Adams, present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Alright, all council members are present and accounted for. Moving on to item number two, which are the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections to be made? Alright, hearing none. Moving on to item number three, which is presentations. So I'm going to need a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a motion? First Vice Mayor, Hope.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add as item G through I on the new business.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. What are the motions?
There's no further discussion.
You can read what motions you would be adding.
Okay. Okay, a motion to convene an executive session to discuss ongoing collective bargaining contracts.
Okay.
You didn't vote on...
No, we're not. We're not voting. I was just having her do, like, explain what the motions would be.
You want to first, the motion to amend the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Have that voted on to pass? And then discuss the items.
Okay, alright. Well, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Alright, motion, please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester? Yes.
Alright, motion to amend passes. Now will you please state what motions you would like to add?
Item G, a motion to convene an executive session to discuss ongoing collective bargaining contracts.
And then the next ones would just be appointments.
And the mayor states that an official, and then a motion must be...
Yeah.
So you want the next motion?
The motion's, it'll be at the end, so...
We're going into executive session first.
Oh, we're going to do it first? Okay. Alright. I'll just, I'll just make it. So, when I make the motion. "I make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss ongoing collective bargaining contracts."
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. There ain't further discussion? Alright, this could be a...
Are we going into executive session at this moment?
Yeah, we're going, we're going to go in first.
We do have presentations today, correct?
Yes.
Would it, would it be feasible to do our presentations and go into executive sessions after?
Yes.
In courtesy of...
I don't think the executive session shouldn't take too long, depending on what you want to...
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes?
Okay.
We'll come right back.
Okay.
We, we did, but this one would go a lot faster because it should still be about the same contract. Okay, so, will the clerk, please call the roll on the motion?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, motion to convene an executive session passes.
So we are going to go into executive session now. We will be back very shortly. So no official business will be taken when we're in executive session, but it's just to discuss negotiation and contracts currently, so... Alright, "I make a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the regular council meeting."
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. This could be a voice vote, so all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so we are back into regular session. And is there a motion? Councilmember Harrison.
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Rhonda Howard to Quality of Life Commission.
Second.
It has been moved improperly seconded. Any further discussion?
None at this time. Just have Ms. Howard come up and, if you want to unboth it, or just want to...
We'll do the roll call first.
Okay.
So, will the clerk, please call the roll on the motion?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Alright, motion passes. So, yes, if you, Ms. Howard, if you'd like to come up, I swear you in. Actually, one second. We'll do both at the same time because we have another one. Is there another motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Shyla Smith to the Quality of Life Commission.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved improperly seconded. Any further discussion?
No, it's just, I think we've got two great candidates who are going to serve the city well.
Alright, glad about that. Alright, will the clerk, please call the roll on the motion?
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. So now would you both come up and then we are going to swear you in. So raise your right hand. Both doing quality life. So raise your right hand, you'll repeat after me. So when I say aye, then you'll state your name. You say aye, you state your name. And then you can either swear or affirm. And then just repeat after me and you will say at the end, the commission that you're being appointed to, okay? So, aye?
Aye.
State your name.
To Shyla's hand.
Rhonda Howard.
Alright, do solemnly swear or affirm?
S solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio?
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park. I apologize. I apologize.
And that I do faithfully?
That I do faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as?
Discharge the duties as.
State the commission.
The Quality of Life Commission.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for both joining the Quality of Life Commission. It's a really great commission. And we need residents just like you to show up every day and make Forest Park great because you are what makes Forest Park great.
Absolutely.
Alright, so that concludes item number three on the agenda, which is presentations. We're going to move on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So if anyone would like to address council, please come to the podium. And there should be a sign-in sheet and a pen up there, and then state your name and your address, and then you can address council.
I'm speaking in behalf of my mother. She has been a resident of Forest Park for 43 years. We share a home directly across from the new construction area. The dust has been excessive. We weren't able to open our windows during the summer. Our home is very dusty. We have health concerns due to the dust and the fumes from the excavation equipment. We saw lots of swirling dust this summer. In closing, we're asking the city to monitor the situation closely. Thank you.
What was your name, please? I'm sorry. Your name?
Oh, I'm, I'm... I'm sorry. I'm Loretta Allen. My mother is the resident Barbara Allen Cooksey, and we do share, we share the home together.
My name is Urban Moore, and I live at 647 Waycross, and I'm her neighbor, and I have the same complaint about the dust pollution that's coming into my home.
Thank you for your concern.
My name is Sharma Banis, and I am here in regards to my business and my husband's business, which we are or have been attempting to open at 540 Northland Boulevard. We have come before the planning commission previously, a couple of weeks back, in regards to change in zoning, which was approved. However, we are facing, I would say, extensive pushback in what we believe is selective enforcement in regards to building regulations for the space that we're trying to occupy. We feel that, you know, the process hasn't gone through in a proper manner, and, you know, like I said, there is some selective enforcement going on there, primarily because we believe we are being, you know, forced to comply with different regulations that other businesses in our area who perform the same functions are not being, you know, mandated to do. So at this point, we're here because, you know, we want to voice our concerns with the building department and just, you know, understand why is it, why is it we're being, you know, you know, forced to, I don't want to say comply, but make changes to a space that no other business, again, performing the same function, has to do. And we, of course, have done our research, our own market research, and supported by other facts, and, you know, we can validate this information. So, again, we're here to voice our concerns in regards to, you know, our experience with the building department.
Okay. I was on the planning commission, and this is your husband, correct? Okay.
Yeah, just, just to kind of double down on that, like, I, there's, there's businesses that are granted occupancy permits in the city of Forest Park within the same industry by the same building and code enforcement agency that, that is, for whatever, selectively targeting us. And I, I am not going to put up with that. Like, I, I have done everything. I have not done anything wrong except for ask the reasons why. I've brought a, a, a nice business here to the city of Forest Park. I've, I've kind of kept my cool. I, I don't understand. If the city of Forest Park could, could really understand who they have working in the building department, and the things that they have said to me is egregious. And I'm almost embarrassed. This is probably one of the worst mistakes I've ever made in my life, is just going into a lease over here and deciding to move my business from 1740 South Erie Boulevard out of an old Kroger space and putting it into here and painting that building. There's, there's a long timeline, lawyers involved. We have done nothing wrong. And that, to me, unfortunately, is the definition of racism. Because prejudice, you cannot like people for a certain thing. You cannot like people for this. But racism is power and control. And Rafiq Nikouzi has too much power and too much control and no guidelines.
Really quick, sir, please refrain from using any city employee name. You can still address council for your concern, but we don't want to single out an employee.
And I want to know, we filed formal complaints, we filed answers why, what you want us to do, we don't get anything back. What we get back is completely outlandish, and it makes no sense. Again, you have other entities operating within the city of Forest Park, I'm going to say it out loud, that you granted occupancy permits to already. You can't grandfather in safety. That would be like saying that everybody that got a driver's license before, 1982, doesn't need to wear a seatbelt because we're going to grandfather him in. That's it.
Alright, well, thank you for your time. Since you did mention that this is going to arbitration, we'll allow your attorney to still contact the city attorney to discuss it. Thank you. Alright. Any other member of the public would like to address council? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to item number five, which is reports from council members. So we're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello, council, and hello, residents of the city of Forest Park. I have a couple of things I want to mention. The beautification committee had the opportunity this past Friday to have dinner, and then we went out to Cracker Barrel, a Forest Park business, and then we went and we judged homes in the city of Forest Park in total. There were 15 homes, and we are very grateful, very grateful and appreciative to Mr. Redbeard Austin for driving the vehicle for us. He was a joy to be with, so we want to thank the city manager and the city in itself for providing us with a driver. Thank you so very much. In addition to beautification, has also come together to have some discussions about our processes of how we judge yards. So we do recognize that we have a little bit of time before we go into the summer judging for yards. However, we've been putting in some work to try to get some additional things kind of laid out and mapped out. We are looking for work to the mayor, joining us on January the 19th, which would be our first beautification meeting. And Mayor, also to you having your email, our criteria and some of our suggestions for improvement in partnership. Also to Tree City. Forest Park will be hosting, hopefully, the 2026 Tree City event. We are very, very excited about that. Forest Park has been a member of Tree City for the last 34 years. We are asking for the mayor and/or the city manager, in partnership with myself, to come to the lunching on April the 24th, 2025. We'll make provision that you all get that information as well, but we are very excited to be hosting Tree City here in Forest Park. And also, I'd like to make mention, Councilwoman Clark had presented us with a letter today of some things that we should possibly consider targeting early on when we come back from our winter break. And so I just wanted to urge and suggest that we do put this on the agenda so that we'll be able to do that, so that we can hit the ground running to continue the amazing work that we're already doing here in Forest Park. Oh, one more thing. We've been talking about our brothers and sisters here in Forest Park, from the Martinian community, and really wanting to find ways that we can serve that community well. I'm very excited to say that I've been able to connect with other organizations that are serving the communities as well, serving that particular community as well in other cities. And we're having a kind of a powwow meeting, Mayor, on December the 19th. It's going to be about 50 different organizations coming together in an effort to see how do we serve the community and serve the community well. And then me being able to bring back some information to see how we can implement some of those opportunities here in Forest Park.
Okay.
And that will conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. And I have added that work session item to the agenda. Alright, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you all out here, and you all have to stay for the whole meeting. Just not necessarily report, I just wanted to share some, some actual good news that we have going on in the city of Forest Park. You know, Thanksgiving was, was, has just passed, and one of our partners, Kingdom Family Dentistry, did an amazing job in passing out 700 turkeys to the residents around the city. And so Officer Wilson and Officer Hackman did an excellent job in making sure that our residents receive those, and it was, it was just very well, well-needed. Our, our officers are continuing to build relationships and deepen themselves into our community. They have been participating, of course, with the produce pop-up and took 20 Winton Woods Middle School youth to see the Indiana Pacers game in November, and I thought that that was absolutely wonderful. So we want to continue to support them on their work and pray for all the, the good and, and wonderful relationships that they are continuing to build in this great community.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Clark, do you have any work session items to add?
I do not.
Alright, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Howard and Ms. Smith for swearing in today to our Quality of Life Commission. And for those residents who might want to participate, please, you can grab an application outside these doors and volunteer to be a part of this great city. I would like to wish everybody happy holidays. I know next week is Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and other holidays, so whatever your, your faith background, I wish you happy holidays, and we're going to go into 2025 that much greater. I have nothing, but one thing I do like to say is, last week, my son and I were at Cracker Barrel, and a gentleman had a medical event, and they did call Forest Park Fire and Police to come take care of the situation. And I could not have been any more prouder, just to see the professionalism and, and the speed where they were able to take care of that gentleman and get him out of there. So to our residents, we do have excellent police fire and public safety here, but I just wanted to really just give them their kudos for what I witnessed last week. And I have nothing for work session.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Moving on to First Vice Mayor, Hope.
I do not have a report tonight. I would just like to wish everybody a happy, safe holidays and look forward to a bigger and better 2025. And I do not have any items to add, sir.
Thank you for that. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy holidays to our residents and our guests and our businesses. I also want to congratulate Ms. Smith and Ms. Howard for joining the Quality of Life, and so we look forward to your participation and so, in the new year of 2025. So welcome to our Quality of Life Commission. And no, I have no agenda items for work session.
Alright, thank you for that. Dr. Moore, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mayor, and good evening to Forest Park and the citizens. I just wanted to comment as a follow-up from our last, pretty much family-friendly event that we had for this year with our Breakfast with Santa. So it was located at, at the Frish's on Harrison Avenue, and we moved to this location because we had the, one of our Frish's that was on Winton Road suffered, on Winton, they closed. Yes. Did I say Harrison? Hamilton? Thank you. Councilwoman Clark likes to keep that polish on my shoulder. So we do want to thank the city and the staff for doing a great job. We had a, had a great turnout. I know the kids really enjoyed it, and the mamas and the daddies, and the brothers and the sisters, all that were there. Mayor was there, he was smiling, enjoying seeing the festivities. It was a great time. I know we sometime have to deal with the point of subjects that bring out seriousness in life, but it's always good to encounter events that bring a point of joy to different ones, especially to our children, because we know that they possess the position to be moved for the future growth, not only for our city, but for abroad. So we do want to thank the city for that, and let us continue to look forward to doing great things for the city. But we know, as always, the challenge each day. We all will be faced with challenges, but let's, let's be steadfast and, and have the right mindset to doing the right thing. So thank you for that, Mayor.
Alright, thank you for that. Councilmember Sylvester, so that concludes item number five, which is reports from council members. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. Just to echo those sentiments, the Breakfast with Santa event was well-attended, so we do thank all of the residents for coming out. We do thank our partner, Frish's on Hamilton Avenue. But also, this past weekend, the voice of your customer, Crystal Kendrick, brought her annual photos with Santa to the Forest Park library, and it was, I mean, it was massive. There were about 1,400 people who came out to get a free photo of their family with Santa Claus. The line was literally out the door. It was, so it's good to see a lot of residents coming out, utilizing the library, but then also the library being an excellent partner and continuing to have events for people. And also, they said a lot of, I think about 1,000 people signed up for library cards.
Wow.
While, yeah, they, they had workstations for children while they were in line, so it was a long wait, but people, kids did play. Parents were a little annoyed, but they made it through. And then they had, at the end of the line, before you got to see Santa, you could sign up for a library card, which a lot of people did, so it was good to see that, and we do thank Crystal for bringing that out here this year, and we hope that she can bring it again next year. But speaking of events, the city manager did make a report a few weeks back and mentioned that there were over 100 events across the city of Forest Park this year. So, city of Forest Park is doing more events than I've ever seen in my time living here, and every event, I would say, has really had record attendance and record turnout. So that's a testament to the hard work of council and the city administration and all of our staff, but that's also a testament to the fact that people love this community and they like to come out, they like to party, jazz in the park, party in the park. So we do thank you. Please continue to come out. Please continue to come to council meetings and tell us about the events and the amenities that you would like to see in the community. And to Ms. Allen in particular, please pardon our dust as we are growing to accommodate, to really capture this momentum that we have. We are in the middle of a, of a building in a development period in Forest Park, so there is, there will be a few growing pains, but we have to build not only for the people who are here, but for the generations to come. So please be patient with us as we continue to grow and make Forest Park even bigger and better. And to echo everyone's sentiments, 2025 will be bigger and better. And with that, I will wish everyone happy holidays and conclude my report. So moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report, we're going to hear from Mr. Don Jones.
I want to thank you all for attending this evening. We have a nice crowd here, and again, we'll keep an eye on that dust for you and do our best. Sorry to hear that. I know it was, I know it was a tough, tough summer. We do have a few things going on here. I just wanted to let everyone know that coming up on January 7th at 4:00 PM at the New Library, our Historical Society has a, has a, pretty much monthly, but maybe every other month, they have a Great Grads program. So they've got a new Great Grads program coming up on January 7th at 4:00 PM at the New Library. It highlights all of the graduates from, that either lived here in the city of Forest Park or graduated here from the city of Forest Park, whether it was Green Hills or Forest Park High School back in the day, even Winton Woods as well. But, so again, if you get an opportunity and you want to learn a little bit of, of Forest Park history, check that out on January 7th at the New Library at 4 o'clock. Everyone's welcome. And also, I want to let everyone know as well, it looks like we're going to have some, this is probably the last time we get to talk before, before Christmas, so happy, happy holidays, and we wish everyone safe, safe travels while they're out with their families and so forth. But also, I want to remind everyone that we're looking at some bad weather coming up here in late, late Jan, around Christmas, maybe Christmas Day, also maybe the end of this week as well. So if you're out and your cars are on the street, you could do us a favor by moving them to your driveways if you can, and get them in there as best you can, and tell your neighbors as well, so we can get our snowplows up and down those streets and get the streets cleaned up as quick as possible. So, again, give us a help, give us a little helping hand and make sure that you try and keep those cars off the street. Once it's already done, you can get your cars back out and put them on, put them back on the street, but see if you can park in each other's driveways or just help each other, help each neighbors out. So, other than that, I hope everyone has a great holiday.
Alright, thank you for that, Don. Now we're going to move on to item number eight, which is our other reports, and we're going to hear from our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few items. I did approve Resolution 562024, appointing Jermaine Hill as our next fire chief. I have also had an opportunity to review and approve an answer filed on behalf of the city in a federal court case, Byrd versus Forest Park. I did complete the vendor registration that's required for vendors such as myself to work for the city of Forest Park. Hopefully, it gets approved.
We'll see.
I also had the opportunity to work with the building department and the fire department regarding the 540 Northland Boulevard property. I'm not sure if you know, but the actual denial plans approval adjudication order was issued today, both by email to Mr. Dunning and his attorney, as well as by ordinary mail. That would be the end of my report.
Alright, thank you for that, Mr. Wykoff. Alright, moving on to our other report from our clerk of councils, clerk of council, Ms. Keia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the report that ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four and thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four, as well as resolutions numbered thirty, fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four through fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Um so that concludes item number eight. We're gonna move on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. But before we begin, this is the point um where you get to see how the sausage gets made, so uh it won't hurt our feelings if people feel that they need to, you know, slip out, um but it does get a little bit boring from here, so just fair warning. All right, so I need a motion to suspend.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the second time by title only ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four and thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
Second. It has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
These ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that. First Vice Mayor Holt, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Our motion to suspend passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance appointing Darren E. Nye, attorney-at-law, as public defender and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Uh so this is a procedural action to appoint uh Darren Nye as the public defender of the city of Forest Park, and Darren has been in service with the city for how many years, John, I would say?
I would say eighteen to twenty, in that range.
Eighteen to twenty years, okay, I was I was a toddler, so. All right, um so with that, I would urge adoption.
That was smooth. That was so smooth, like.
Will the clerk, will the clerk please re uh uh call the role on the motion to adopt?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number thirty-three, thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance appointing John R. Wykoff, attorney-at-law, as solicitor, law director, and prosecutor, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I got some questions about this one. Now, I uh I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Uh so this is also a procedural action to appoint John Wykoff as the law director and prosecutor for the city, who has served the city faithfully um for a number of years and doesn't look a day over thirty-two. All right, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven zero. Um that concludes unfinished business. Moving on to item number ten, which is new business, and I need another motion to suspend.
I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first time only by title, title only, resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four through fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That these resolution were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor Holt. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Will the clerk please read Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four, approving a change order from Barrett Paved Materials, Inc. for the Sharon Row Improvement Project.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, the uh original contract included full death repairs for a portion of our roadway. After the milling of the surface began, additional area of poor base came to light, so portions of the pavement were deteriorating. They were not visible before the milling. Uh the request is for a charge order in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. And uh I move to adopt Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
All right, resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven zero. Uh will the clerk please um read Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the city of Forest Park and the truck drivers, chauffeurs, and helpers local union number one hundred, Public Works employees.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I move to adopt Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-four. All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Uh so the current agreement expires on the end of this month, so December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Negotiations between the city and the Public Works Union resulted in several tentative changes, including extending the probationary period up to ninety days, regu- uh reducing progressive disciplinary action after one year, and recognizing Juneteenth as an official holiday. So employees can use up to eighty hours of sick leave for postnatal care for their wives. Uh the union allowance has been accr- increased due to rising costs. Salaries will rise by three point five percent in twenty-twenty-five, three percent in twenty-twenty-six, and another three percent in twenty-twenty-seven. Additionally, an incentive program offers up to a one percent salary increase based on performance, attendance, and discipline. And with that, I would urge adoption. Um so will the clerk please call the role uh on the motion to adopt?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Our resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven zero. Um will the clerk please read Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four, amending the resolution se- I'm sorry, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh yes, I move that we adopt Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four.
It has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh yes, sir. This salary resolution is to authorize salaries and wages agreed to, agreed in new public work contracts. The adjustment will be three, a three point five increase for the year twenty-twenty-five.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Uh will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven zero. Uh will the clerk please read Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-twenty-four in full?
Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-twenty-four, a resolution affirming the city manager's decision to appoint Jermaine Hill as the new fire chief and provide for a smooth transition period with current chief Alfie Jones. Whereas Chief Alfie Jones has faithfully served the city of Forest Park as fire chief for over thirteen years and a total of over thirty-two ye- thirty-two years of dedicated service and has made invaluable contributions to the safety and well-being of the community throughout his tenure. And whereas Chief Alfie Jones has announced his retirement effective January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and the city of Forest Park recognizes the importance of ensuring a smooth, ensuring a smooth and orderly transition of leadership in the fire department. And whereas Jermaine Hill, an experienced and dedicated assistant fire chief, has been identified as the successor to Chief Alfie Jones, and the city manager desires to appoint him as new fire chief effective December nine, ninth, twenty-twenty-four. And whereas the city of Forest Park acknowledges the need for a thorough handover process to ensure the continued success of the fire department and the effective implementation of policies, operation, and personnel management during the transition period. And whereas Chief Alfie Jones has agreed to assist in the transition by providing necessary support, documentation, and guidance to Jermaine Hill, ensuring a seamless transfer of responsibilities, authority, and knowledge from December ninth, twenty-twenty-four to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, where he will then begin his terminal leave as provided in the city of Forest Park's policies and procedures. And whereas the city council of Forest Park recognizes that this transition will enable Jermaine Hill to assume his new role as fire chief while benefiting from the support of Chief Jones during the transition period, ensuring continued excellence in the fire department's operations and services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, city council affirms the city manager's decision to A, appoint Jermaine Hill as the new fire chief for the city of Forest Park effective December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. B, direct Chief Alfie Jones to continue providing the necessary support, including all required documentation, training, and guidance to Jermaine Hill to ensure a smooth and successful transition of responsibilities, authorities, and duty from December ninth, twenty-twenty-four to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, at which time Chief Jones will begin his terminal leave. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Can you re- can you repeat the last half again? Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
It has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I tell you what, um all the things you said about our outgoing chief and our incoming chief, um I mean, you couldn't have said anything better. Um Chief Jones, uh the thing, he grew up here in Forest Park, right? He grew up in.
Yeah, I think so.
No, he went to Green.
He went to Forest Park.
Went to Forest Park, yes, sir. Oh, he went to Green Hills, but he grew up in Forest Park, right, so just really just to have that that connection um growing up here and serving the city and really for all the things that um that that Jermaine has done um, you know, in the community, it it's great that we have him representing. Um so the, I'm thankful for a smooth transition, I guess, uh we call, is it former chief or is it Chief Emeritus uh Jones, or what is it? I don't know.
That's why we're passing this resolution.
Yeah, okay, so, so I'd like to thank them both for their service to the city, and council does recognize the importance of this transition for the fire department's ongoing success.
All right, uh thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. Uh will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-twenty-four passes seven to zero. And all right, moving on to item number E. Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following individuals to the respective boards or commissions. Uh Robin Smith to the Beautification Commission with expiration expiration date of uh November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Alberta Davis to the Beautification Commission, expiration date eleven thirty twenty-seven. William Howard to the Beautification Commission, expiration date eleven thirty twenty-seven. Beverly Moore, their Beautification Committee, expiration date eleven thirty twenty twenty-seven. Diana Herbie, Charter Revision Committee, with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-nine. Johnny Houston to the Civil Service Commission with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-seven. Jerry Arnold to the Civil Service Commission with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty-seven. Diana Herbie, Economic Development Commission, with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty-seven. Billy Joe Rice to the Recreation Commission with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-seven. Kathy Gray to the Beautificat- Recreation Commission, excuse me, with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-seven. Eloise Richardson, Recreation Commission, with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-seven. Chuck Johnson to the Stormwater Utility Board with expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-eight. And Nancy Goines to the Stormwater Utility Board with the expiration date of eleven thirty twenty twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Any further discussion?
Uh now, this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. This could be a voice vote, so all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to appoint the following individuals passes seven zero. And then uh item number F, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion to accept the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Further discussion.
All right, this can also be a voice vote, so all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. So is, that concludes all of the new business, so we are gonna move to adjournment. Is there any other business to come before the body?
Yes, Mayor, I do apologize. I want to add one more item to the um agenda for work session, and that is, as we move into the twenty-twenty-five year, there was some discussion earlier this year that we may consider at least having some more discussion about the fifth Monday of every month, hoping to have partnership po- possibly with the Wenton Woods School District. That was a discussion that we had. We did not come up with anything definitive, and so I just want to know if we could please have that discussion again as we move into the new year. And again, it's because we have that fifth Monday of, in a couple of months, um in the year, and possibly using that fifth Monday to have some partnership with the school board to just kind of do some collaborative work.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? It has been a great year, and happy holidays, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.